This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you all for being here this evening and joining us for the City Council meeting this evening. If you'd all like to be in, let us know, we'll have our information throughout the time.
In this new world, God is his shepherd. And when we run out, we just stand on empty streets of empty ground. And this whole thing has come along. We've already said perfectly, it's provided up across from the state. We've had to build a leadership bond, it's pretty good, it's provided awesome. Now we're gonna have a false ship with the leadership providing for us. But we need this place, it was taken from the same. But we need that, so we're not, but he's a solid one, he's a solid one. We have to build that, we need this name, baby man.
I would like to remind everyone, please, please lean into the microphone as you're, uh, we're working on our local technology, it's held on the broadcast and they're recording. So we'll go ahead and get started and ask for any citizens, uh, concerns about, not when I was in there. There could be one that would want to stand in for the city council. Very, very well. We'll be right off our consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening will include the minutes of the day, or eleven twenty twenty city council meeting. There's claims for city operations and claims for public health facility operations. Are these to be pulled by citizens? Staff? Questions or concerns from the council? Seeing that, I didn't create a motion.
Sir, I'm a motion we approved at the consent agenda.
Second. Moved by Captain Reed, this is second. Shannon, uh, can we have a vote?
What? Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Uh, Matthew?
Yes.
Johnson? Hurst? Dennis? Hannah?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Most of the best.
Very good. Uh, on city business, the first of which is the purchase of the 2021 brake liner, not the truck. Uh, thank you, sir. That needs, uh, that needs retropublic works. Like, um, myself and the municipal manager are requesting the recommendation to go to purchase a new brake liner, some brake liners. Uh, this truck, I'm gonna, will be replacing the 2007, the replacement, if you remember last year, Russell Stein replaced the sister truck in this one. Uh, with the standard, and the time, replacing, uh, the, uh, single action, with a single action. Uh, we went, our black shirt truck, we attended an accident, purple wave, and it's telling me that it's a front yard. You imagine what it worked, uh, in purple wave, the somebody did, the purple wave fixed it up, it didn't make it on the bus. We were playing, we took a guy down, and he's gonna go around the purple wave, and then he got all the way, he was quick to deal with it. We actually had him, because the guy knocked fifteen grand off the road, each, thirty grand off of it. So, he got it all, it worked. Okay, okay, Steve. Uh, uh, yeah, it's a, part of the theory with the brake liner business is things might be one of the two trucks. Uh, it could be, so the previous contact point, let them know that part of the thing, purple wave was the one that was related to that. The other truck was remaining, uh, back, back to the reviews now, how it was new and here from then. Uh, the truck will have the same benefits, it'll be able to use its backup too, all slip and we plug it. And, uh, we'll use it for other, uh, files for, we're waiting to order the water. Uh, if you have anything, which is the exact, are you comfortable with purple wave, with more money for the trade than us? And for these trucks, it's kind of, it'd be, you don't really know what to get out of them. It's like, you can see a lot of them, like, if I practice both of them. I would, I'm pretty shocked by myself. I've treated it very good.
Yes. Very good.
Perhaps.
Yes.
But it is something, actually, really, like, you guys, you know, I don't know. You're right, like that. So we can go ahead and discuss it, or, um, anybody?
This mayor, I have no sense of the purchase, I have a twenty point by brake liner, that's a product from Kansas, a brake liner that's not on the, nineteen dollars, sixty six dollars.
Good. So moved by Captain Burley and, Matthew? Uh, I don't know.
Councilor Tom?
Yeah, sorry, I heard it, I hope there's something. Okay. Uh, questions, concerns, comments, and, uh, here. As long as you're comfortable with it. Usually, if you're just, uh, if you have a contract on trade. They're not the ones who, or the, uh, thank you. So I think you can still do all of them. Thank you. Anytime from the citizen, sir? In that, or according to the, so please?
Reese?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Lawson?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rose? Yes. Most of the best.
Yes. You guys like the, uh, the last one, that, we need to work out with, because these ones will be back as well. That's, uh, number two, bar three thousand four hundred, opinion of the council, or, uh, part of the deal, just, just, it's whatever it's actually about.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor, Congressman, uh, P A, very different. Uh, this first argument is the, just the, uh, sir. But then, this first idea is for approval of the, for the community council to be signed by the government's four chairs. Uh, and this is one of the requirements for, and the techniques for transfers, uh, to P C K A J. Uh, and it's just these segments that are ongoing at the top of the community council, and to the best of my knowledge, they are all approved and accurate segments. Uh, I do have the information, if you need it.
That's, um, I don't know, uh, thanks, but it's a very, next from the citizen, I'm ready, sir. How about now? Uh, the government's four, seeing that, I can't hear anything. This mayor, I mean, the motion to approve this. That's, thank you. So moved by Captain Thompson, and the consent by, I think, it's not, what, you can't see what? Uh, and we'll go ahead and start with a quick, just comments on this right now. Yes.
Sir. Mr. Google Chrome.
Yeah, I think I'm right. Do you guys give the overview of our people, remember? Why isn't it a question?
Uh, well, there are a couple of reasons. I know that one is high, looks like they, they look in the building, they think it's a one at the time. Uh, but they believe then, it was also in the best interest, and it's for many reasons. One being that with such a small property, uh, we just don't have the resources to successfully maintain operation to future. Uh, and it being a, essentially a two-person staff, we just don't have the support or the resources or the backup that we need to properly operate. Uh, with P C K, they have a figure, they have many more resources, staff, more programs that they can offer to the residents than what we can. Um, I just feel like it would be in the best interest, unable to, to sustain, maintain sustainability of the public health.
Okay, but I guess I always thought that, you know, push that on the left side, you have to, you know, get that out. You've done some wonderful job of the, the, however, it seems like, um, that quality and quantity potential for us. I guess I don't see the same response as you, Captain, that, that will take care of all of that.
Well, they, they, they still have, it's happened over here. Uh, it won't be a full-time person, they did say it'd be a part-time person, but they do still plan to have somebody on site. Uh, and once somebody isn't on site, the residents are always welcome to call the P C K office up there, bring somebody immediately, if they don't want to leave a message at the office here. Uh, I think the hardest thing, and the biggest, well, not the biggest, but one of the two, um, from a city standpoint, is, it's, we're kind of on our own, and we, I guess I don't know how to really, like, word it, but it's basically just we. Uh, and I feel like they just benefit a lot more having more staff. I really think that they have more resources, programs, like, all the stuff that we just simply can't offer them. Like, if it's one person running it, that's just a,
Or a bunch of programs.
Um, they have the different programs.
What else?
The planning programs, the resume writing programs, job tuning programs. Um, they help you get back to work, they have family assistance ability programs, um, if you put hard times, it'll give you background fee. They just have the brand, people that run those programs, because they have more staff than just one person. That are, then they have to go into town for those programs, or they're available now. Um, I think that you should be, I think you need, I think, here, because it's all, it's not, a lot of it's not in person. Like, if they have a resume class, a lot of that stuff, if you're in the library, there's a long zoom now to teach. Uh, so those are all the options to, and the, the person that would be here on site, or kind of whatnot, would be able to focus on that stuff as well.
Hi.
Well, um, no, it's, it's, if you're totally comfortable getting all of this, where, you know, what you, uh, this stuff, I'm forgetting a lot. Does this go to our pledge directly, everything, we prefer to follow you? Yes. Everything, it's federal programs. But we, you guys acted separate, what the city council does, it's originally set up, I can set these. Uh, the city council put that role on, as we, on the board.
The board, yeah.
Council. Uh, but this, this kind of goes back to roughly a year ago, when the city council met, that public health authority, and that residents talked about their grant options that were available. Uh, such as transitioning it over to Kansas City, and it's the other option, that was, that was a late, should P C K not want to, uh, take it over, there's some requirements, there's part of that is concerned. They have effectively right of first refusal, P C K does, they would like to, like, have the other options, take it and make it private. Uh, it's very, they do, um, previously, uh, with staff right around somewhat out of temporary basis. So, uh, she's agreed to stay on through this transition, uh, but had the free tax of pushing like some alternate opportunities. Uh, so that's part of this, as well, is, because again, this was already, we have a moving train, and we're all repositioning this anyway, carrying departure imminent. Again, this is sort of the head of this entire competition, um, all coming to a end.
And another thing, with, with, if it's just being one person there, uh, I don't know, if you guys know, but, um, we staff, I am, but that, I guess you can say, my salary, everything is paid by us, and no city money whatsoever. Nobody in the city staff knows how to do with it, nobody. If I don't, and I started coming into work, and I couldn't work for months, there wouldn't be anybody that would know what to do. And that is one of the liabilities citywide, that I was trying to plunk out, and that's why when my lady that loved, that hired a place, they were looking at giving it away then. Um, so you could hire somebody and to attract me, but there's always that risk of, ooh, you have a staff of one, what happens if something happens without staff of one? So that's another major consideration, and one of the things that we talk about, uh, just from a city life, yes. And that's always concerned me, like, if, I'm actually a self-didger, and I always wonder that if I could hire, who would run the company? So, so those are the kind of things that, uh, are also a thing. And the city wouldn't have that line though anymore, but somebody that had a much larger staff, and somebody's clerk said, they could easily pull somebody else in to run the office.
Okay, thank you for researching all I did, quite appreciate it that way, so, appreciate it, thank you, it's my best.
Yes, sir. I've watched this facility for, begins by panic, in the last forty-five years. I've watched it continually, it better, better, slower than sometimes, but always better, especially in the last few years. Appreciate it. The question I have about tenants, are we still have some kind of protection that we're good at getting tenants from Bonner Springs in here? Do they have like a first right of refusal or something?
They actually have that now. So it wouldn't, that wouldn't change. So the platform says that the housing authority currently has is elderly disabled or working for twenty hours, not residents. So, um, and the majority, I would say about ninety to ninety, forty percent of my waiting list is basically out of the, um, and I did app the executive director over there, how they work our current waiting list. They said, everybody that is currently on ours, will stay put and go and order on the list. Anybody that drives after the things for, as a patrol, will go to the P C K. So the normal waiting list that we have now, a couple of the divisions now, hold the impact.
And they'll, they'll be waiting for Bonner Springs?
Yes.
Health Authority, uh, the department?
Yes.
And on that difference, they won't be, are they also on the day's day waiting list?
No. The one that I got currently?
Yes.
No, they can just stay on, on ours.
The ninety-three percent of everyone, the campus, with their, not in the dog man, every one of them.
No, no, they think, uh, they live in Kansas City, which right now, not, they're not in forty, just in that area, and I get a lot of people from Kansas City, and it's telling me that they want out of that, and that's why they try to be here. And so I've quite known to my, this, um, this P C K, but also, our lists are shorter, because we're not as big. So P C K's list is generally closed almost constantly. Uh, but ours is not, because we're a little bit smaller, so, um, they would have that.
The waiting list is closed?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Like, right now, our four, that's the waiting list is closed, and that has like a firm, option of six years.
So that makes it, so you have all of your worker, rented, and then you have a waiting list of how many?
Um, the four, but the things there is only, we have to be, because I have two, four veterans, and the same two families have been announced since before I came on.
And we have three that want in.
Mm-hmm.
That's, 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 yeah.
Before, yeah.
And they still want in.
Mm-hmm.
How many years, total, or unit?
We have fifteen.
Fifteen, uh, skip aside.
Yes.
Uh, and it's, the federal director, up to our outside, there's, uh,
Um, I'm trying to figure that out. I don't think anybody, did we figure that out?
I believe we,
I was gonna say, monitor that.
Oh, look, that's part of what that's, Bonner Springs, four, so that's part of what, maybe it's, uh, we, our, it's, back off, these three items are just, uh, dipping your toe into the water to get through the process. This is still a very cumbersome process, and you can go through a, a ride at least, uh, at the federal level, but this is just, yeah. The, being a council, it's just letting them know, then, federal government, that we don't have any financial concerns, or the life, is continuing to move forward, I think. We don't have our, right, right, right? Right, and we, yes, and we've got to look at, if you can, and, um, we, it's all quarterly basis, but they were at, probably the second, third quarter of this year, before this, but I could be, Steve.
We are currently looking at a July first, for the, um, we do have the right to ask them for sooner, and the executive director said, recommended that I have preferably the forty-five day sooner, they do not have to approve that. It's on our discretion, um, if we tell them that they don't really have these staff there, they, I do think they'll do it sooner, but they don't have to. So July first, the latest, these items are on here, like, Tom said, if it's the first step, I have to have these before I can even officially let, let them know that this is on our, I can't even tell them anything until I have these. So I have to submit these with my, with my notice of heading.
So we, we'll actually be transferring the ownership of this property to you, and would that kind of involve the liability, that will currently responsible for?
Correct. They usually get the bigger rights from their name, and then they're not responsible, they're, the city would have no liability.
They're not, yeah, that's it.
And, um, any money, I don't know right now, but we're not that far into it yet, but I do know that if there was any money, uh, involved, like, sale wire, the road state wire, that next thing to do is back to head.
What will it be?
It, it goes ahead, because we, they funded the operation of the building of those units anyway.
But did they fund the building of the unit?
In nineteen seventy, I lived in it, yeah.
We checked it. All right, no, that's, I didn't know, but, six,
Right.
Five hundred, but is your understanding that that was on a grant from us, that?
That's usually, that's how a couple of property units are built, is you apply, uh, if you want to build such a property, uh, and then they fund it, or building and operations. So, like, they're, they give us money every year to operate.
Correct, correct. I understand that you were supposed to, in Bonner Springs, and then operated by them, at some kind of time, but,
No, they would, they would build to be public health, by, uh,
No.
For you.
Uh, you said there are currently one and a half staff, yourself and someone else?
Two, yeah.
Then with that person, that position?
Yes, I, um, the executive director, P C K, and he, he doesn't want to change anything, he wants to be in there, he doesn't want to change policies. Um, I know some of the questions from last time you met, from you guys, I don't know, who did you mention that a question? Uh, smoking came up, uh, which their policy, they, you can't smoke anywhere, completely properties, uh, not even, like, there's no, there's no smoking areas, anywhere on our properties. Uh, but we have, the, the smoking areas, they said they would keep those. Uh, pet, the pet, uh, that was a question, their policy is the same, so that wouldn't change. Uh, and in a run for the term, saying, they really, they don't want to change, and,
Are you able to negotiate, I'm turning on those types of things, they may say, well, allow smoking now, and six months after, they think it seems that helps?
Uh, I'm not sure, I can ask. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised if eventually they do, um, but, honestly, it probably wouldn't be a bad thing.
So one, assuming this would go to the, then, we as the board, we would go off, and decide on it more or less.
Mm-hmm. But they would still have, like, they wanted to do something, city ordinance, whatever, um, need, so the council, obviously, the city, so if they wanted to build, we, that takes up, we, as part of, something, something like that. Yes, no, no.
Done.
And if they decided, I'm sorry, if they decided to close it?
I don't see that.
If, if they decided to close it, if they do that without any information or, uh,
Correct.
But they need more places than fewer.
Right.
To profit or what, in terms of, in terms of, and looking at building a nuclear facility somewhere, I don't know, right there?
Yes, um, they are, um, they have themselves, going through repositioning, the, the, the bucket with the grand down, said it's just been overrun and run down, and it's been, it's been for a while, so, I don't know if the legal on that, but I do know, the executive director is from here. Um, and he has told me numerous times that Bonner is a home, his home, and he doesn't want, he knows that Bonner needs special service, and he doesn't want, can't, we can't, we'll take it down or anything.
Sir, I agree, sir, P C K, is that just a box of anything, or the disassembly by a property owner?
I think it's box of unit.
It's similarly, there's something, one, something hacked, and we wanted to come out of that agreement with P C K. Is that a possible building or?
And they will have the option to reposition it, like, we talked about, all those repositioning, that they're doing with some of the agreements, they will have that option to do that, Bonner housing, at a later date as well. But again, that's all, like, that basically boils down to them just not depending on how they get their money anymore.
So what are the benefits that they're taking out?
Um, well, they're using it right now, um, and they know that a lot of applicants want this area. Um, they, they will start getting regular money for it instead of us, if we won't be here. Uh, but, absolutely, there's no, like, massive, that's,
There is zero that lasts, I would say, so, there's no, like,
Here, this is, if, 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 they shouldn't be spending any of the Bonner, credit money, to P C K's property.
And, uh, apparently, they, like, when we have different portfolios or properties, essentially, New York's biggest, New York City, and Fifth, uh, I don't have this, it was just me, but they have portfolios for each property and grant, uh, operating in the capital fund, and then for a port, how they spend that on that particular portfolio for that property.
So there's more oversight, and they're, that they can give us some substantive security that we might not have in the way that we're, you can buy it?
Right, they, the P C K also, they won't have, you won't have max salary. So right there, Bonner hasn't already gets that much more than it has.
But they, they will, they will track, and service, and they will build their money, or, or,
Right, but it'll be a full-time person, it won't be a full-time person with benefit, then, to the degree, you know?
Right.
Uh, so it would be way less than what is going for right now.
Or that number of units that we have, may, compared to the number of units they have, which is the number of personnel that they have.
Right.
So this is just scratching the surface, what's the, is this a decent amount of, like, what's the next day that we'll be brought in? This is not authorized, this is scratching the surface.
Yeah, most of what needs done next, I have to mess with, patch the notice to your name, and it can be Google too, but I have it here. Uh, like, this lays out, I think, all the steps that I, that we want to do. Um, most of it is P C K work, they have to do more than I do, uh, but I will hopefully, let me look at this, or, talk with them, but I, I really want to put it in your emails. Um, so the next steps after, we both request, we both have to send in, uh, notification, there's a review, there's several reviews. Initial view, completeness of views, matter of review, tons of reviews, um, Um, he said, he took, he took the Michael's news out of town, that he offered, he's more than willing to, um, um, let me, like, I know before, we had talked about him in a workshop, uh, and then, like, three weeks after we all met, so, not that often, but, uh, the general questions that we got from the last meeting, I asked them, all of them, and, well, they went to the residence, and it was all, you know, the general stuff, does anybody want to lose their home, and I can lose my head, do I quit smoking, all that stuff.
We're in, um, We're in, um, it, building options concerns that the residents there, the citizens of bottom springs are hesitant, uh, because of some way we perceive that we are guided by, the unified government in Kansas City campus, and the, the KCK public housing authorities is a, um, in most people's perspective, uh, a lot behind. So, um, it's difficult for us to see an equitable arrangement for bottom springs to help those residents in our public housing. Protect them as well as the citizens of bottom springs, that perceive that bottom springs have a home, public housing authority.
Yes, if you scroll below by the card, we can make it to where whoever wanted it passed to keep it uh, in Kansas for twenty years. If you actually want a public grant, which we can go to anyway, I can deal with whatever.
My biggest word is just that. ACK doesn't have, or even like, you are not, two percent of people are, our people already. If it was the people that were privatized, semi-privatized, uh, it would be in a better interest of the public, better than on a grant. If last week was any compilation of, uh, how highly down we're going to get.
UG is a little bit of a basic thing. But, uh, we are, uh, so you heard of the city council and our senior board? ACK, city council is completely separate, they have their own separate board that has nothing to do with ACK. It's just what's in the best interest of the public problem, and that's who ACK all the time are supporting.
Yeah, there's a separate layer of separation that is not at all real aware of with their, but we've had such a close, uh, clarity with our, a lot of current stuff that we should be said. That's not something that happens when you're like, sorry, so transforming, you hear about whether we're transforming Kansas City Kansas public housing, which is a group that's separate from Kansas City Kansas, when you like it. But that's hard to recognize out here when we are so used to doing things.
Right.
And, uh, I, I think this, from very long a year ago, I, I think this is a good opportunity. I think this will help sustain this for so long. It, it has a lot of anyhow situation that public funds is in with a significant abandonment of higher quality. And studying that kind of a margin of error, I think, are very, very good guidance. Uh, just like the, the residents, the concern with the divisions, we're, we're right there for them and the concerns of them, right?
Well, we're telling you that.
Yeah, you don't, uh, it's, it's hard for us when I'm only experienced, is what we've been seeing from, say, the report office, right?
Right.
And that's, that's different, that is tough. I mean, I don't think we should even, uh, recommend that, because this is, this is by birth, not, not, and I, I, the concerns that this is coming.
Right.
And that's what's happened in the rest of that, is they, their dedication of their drive for one thing, and they're saying, level of better. I don't know.
Right, it makes sense, yeah, absolutely. Um, and I know, like I said, I can tell you repeatedly what all that's for me, but it's not the thing of obviously hearing it from him. Uh, I don't know what all you know about that, I'm not going to get into new programs, but there is more details than me I may not know that are in favor of ACK, the way it happened, uh, wasn't completely, wasn't really their fault, uh, so I don't think, and he's only numerous, like I said, before. Excuse me, uh, and he said he went to Bonner High School, uh, so he wants to keep it apart from her.
Right, so even if, even if it wasn't the one, I would, I would think that could be, so, uh, I appreciate everything you got, and, uh, please, uh, please don't make a whole, give away that, and, uh, for my in his face. Make sure you sell all that, that, that work, uh, in terms of.
Okay, that's true, well, another, this though that may be helpful, your guys have in mind that he is we. I announced my resignation to them last month and that this was going to be happening. I have one complaint, I've had good luck, well wishes, this is not a known, our plans need to change, like, all that. So, like, I don't have one worry coming, you know, on fall, I came in tonight and had a personal, uh, just wanted to say about ACK, I'm seeing, it's not, it's not, it's in a red. So, I think that it settled with this path, the, you know, the initial worry and the meeting that we had with them helped. And, uh, like I said, after our last meeting, I immediately reached out to that executive director and got my all the answers, all the questions, and, uh, so they're all there, and they're, they're, I think they're convocative.
Thank you. Any other questions from the citizens? Back? Other questions, just finally, council?
We've got one question, with all these people from here, ACK, it's fine, I'll give, but if anything happens to our residents, will they, okay?
No, yeah, two seconds, now, there's no residency preference. We don't have to, like, the Lake County Housing Authority has a preference, uh, if you live in a lake, uh, you will go above everybody's cousin. We don't have that right now anyway, and they're not making that, or we're not helping people pay our regards about that.
Cause they're not going to leave for that part of the preference, or?
Not that I'm saying, uh, my whole complaint here has been mostly outside of people coming in. Um, a lot of it is, I give up in Bonner, and I'm out, and I won't come back, and that sort of stuff.
The next thing you can say, oh, right, so, during the resolution.
We can still back out, until it's final, um, as I stated, I can't even give them a formal notice until I have those stuff. And right now, we're already in the like first, pushing it back, we're going back. So, but.
When we're facing areas that goes back the book, and we still, but.
Yes, I mean, I'm trying to tell the transfers on, but.
Uh, I was initially concerned with the, uh, people who live there and future people who live there, but I'm also concerned about the property itself, because it is polished brains. And, and I'm, I'm not saying that ACK Kansas will not fix it, but I'm saying, I don't think we want to end up with this building here in a blank situation to feed their, to feed their players. Do we have any kind of assurances, assurances for that?
For what?
The condition of the building itself. If you're maybe trying to get some magic, they don't pay.
When you're talking about HUD money, that's not a lot. HUD, HUD, um, they do physical inspections, uh, you have to report where you're spending your money in the HUD systems, so, and obviously, if it got too bad, then anybody would go up to the tenants and call them themselves, and they, of course, nothing else matters, right? So, there's, I mean, they, they couldn't easily get away with just like, go over the obstacle people, still there, or anything.
Because see, we're, we're not here to improve water springs, neighborhood and so forth. I just, I don't, I want to make some type of assurance of where it's not going to create something either, that like, it's not going to be a better condition with this power. I just, you know, like I said, he's done a good job, perfectly comfortable with what's at the forefront.
Right.
But I just, because this is part of the, ACK Kansas, very good with the pull of this, I just have a doubt.
And I think they are at that level of, uh, preservation. Keeping with them, I think, will be a good, uh, next move on this, for the. Uh, you mentioned that regarding, sorry, okay, so what did you say is, did the preference with the HUD?
Yes.
We're hearing that they, they, they're very, very, so what they're trying to give.
Then, I don't know what to think else, but all I feel is that HUD is involved for a while, and has one, it's not for a while, because it is so, and so, I think, I think the upfront, I almost feel like they, ACK was gonna push finance completely.
But it's not, it's different.
It's one of the, it's one of the, like, I think it was, uh, yeah.
Is, would it be appropriate to ask table list to the air front, ACK, so, so?
I think if, if this is one, one situation on a long road of, uh, thank you, I can hear. None of this will, will transfer, we have to accept it some time. We cannot accept it then, right, maintaining status quo, we don't.
Right.
So, it is a step, we are making resolutions, what we may make it, but, um, we do, we do empower her to start the project.
Awesome, but her path to the next step.
I just want to check. Sure, look, I have the same concerns that everyone, uh, and I remember a meeting, much helping me doing that now, to change the world is the fact that even back then, you tried to say that you were, you didn't listen, this was your recommendation. Because you had, you had a lot of, and you shot out on the other side, you, uh, you died, and you looked at, you hit your hands on all the things around you, and you imagine that being here, you kind of stood in the right position, you know, that.
Yeah, we've run into Congress, all New York's, what's our, New York's, Kansas City, New York's, all that, and, and nobody knows the operations of that, but it's funny, and from a personal standpoint, wanting to say that I think it'd be amazing to have somebody in here that has support, that knows what they're doing. If I, like, I mean, I love them dearly, and I do, I, if I was to talk to people, knowing you're not probably getting a loan, but, uh, there's just somebody to talk to, to run out ideas, uh, after having a resident issue, or you want to, it simply don't take long, it's not, it's not better. There's somebody to refer them to, if you are having maybe resident, like, like, just somebody to talk to. There's nobody, and it's hard, it's really hard, and I think that if you keep it, and keep it out of it, and tired of replacing me, you're gonna have somebody in here with the same thing, same issues, that might not last six years, and you might be trying, like, constantly trying to find somebody to fill it in, who's seeing the same doubt, like, it's also a very hard one, I offer a loan, I'm somebody, and it's not, I, I think for the property to succeed in the future, both money-wise, tax-wise, product-wise, it's still a bigger step, get more resources. That's just my personal.
And have more. People have to pay my funds for Stanton, because it's not on top of my credit.
Yeah, and I don't need more staff, you know what I mean, like, I don't need another person per se, sitting in the office, the excuse me, I've never worked long in an office, I myself, another day, two, talk to, like, people, or, I'm not, I'm not helping, like, you know, I'm sorry. But, okay, like, it's, it's, it's been my six years, it's been six years, and I think that for the success, we, you guys can borrow, and this dinner, staff, so you're not having to keep the turnover, somebody sitting there alone, that, that's completely the best route.
We get him, we have, and, and certain, and maybe concerns that we all have, at least we have another public that we're close, that can come. So, if we're a small part of that, you know, block.
Right, yeah, right, many small housing authorities, whether it's some of the closing, because they just can't.
And not finding anybody to buy for that, and, 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 all of the, but. We already have a motion, so, no, we.
We're voting on a motion to approve the opinion of council. Ken?
Yep.
Mackey?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Hip?
No.
Reeves? Motion passes?
So, what, item number three, we can, we can, the French, the bond from Southern Authority, we can, the South Authority. Yeah, we think that.
Uh, I don't, um, really, the, again, this is all just documents that have been submitted to, without a formal request, that doesn't make anything permanent. As we deny it, because they're down, they're stated, and they're mine, all of that stuff. Uh, so I can't send in a formal notice without any of this. Uh, on this resolution, in particular, you are acting as the board, uh, because you're allowed to use the transfer, or to acquire the ASK, the next time we have to, but I can, I can, I can, so.
Yes, I did.
Uh, this, this, this is a, this is authorizing the Kansas, the bond from the Council of the, the Kansas City Kansas Council.
Right, the move is like, really, it's second to the council, and other, the council, the council. Then it will be in the one, but.
You're welcome.
You feel like it's not.
I mean, that's how I would spend New York's conference call, and what actually, which is so much, I would.
You got me out, go ahead.
Voting on a motion to approve the regulation on rights and the transfer of bond from Southern Authority, Kansas, Kansas, Southern Authority, Thompson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Hip?
No.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Yes, on to, I mentioned before, which is a resolution, not writing for Kansas City, Kansas, Southern Authority, the bottom, like, is on current, if that is necessary.
Yes, so, this one is, um, we are essentially acting on the council of water springs, uh, since the board of the Health Department approved the business to operate here, you are, are going to have to council water springs, um, for this resolution, just allowing ACK to operate as its own.
I would, uh, uh, any other comments, buttons? There's been votes for the council. This perfectly approached to prove the word. So, uh?
Reeves, and, and, and.
Is there?
Is there?
So.
And, so, we're going to stand.
Questions, concerns, I'm, well, I, I've been here seven years, never talked. Same guy, go ahead.
Voting to approve a resolution, authorizing Kansas City Kansas Housing Authority to operate in water springs, certainly.
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Hip? Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good, thank you.
So, since you would like a brush-off, you have to put this in the D.
Yes.
Okay, I want to have some, thank you, thank you guys.
Uh, very good. On to our reports on this, for, uh, what's the city?
Just a few quick items, I lost my place on the phone, back to it, I wrote that. It is a list of information, it's in hand before, as well as a link, you haven't already seen it, um, UCF government does have a website platform set up for information related to getting the vaccine, so, for anybody that does have interest, that lives, works in Lionheart County, they can go online to UCF government's public website, uh, they say on the top, it's COVID hub, I believe, and you're able to, like, fill out some information, uh, demographics, mostly, also employment, and they will notify you by poll, uh, once you are eligible to vaccinate. So that is still a non-doing process, I'm standing, uh, right now, if you do, still have the one location at some, it's safer, uh, vaccines. They are planning to open up two other locations, one in the eastern side of Lionheart County, and then the western side of Lionheart County. I don't know exactly through the path yet, but it sounds like, uh, information related to that is very imminent, uh, hopefully, probably in vaccine, I think.
I've, I've heard the western one is the best part, I, I thought it was, and I am not sure about.
So that is, uh, again, that is available, uh, well, it's a state website, well, that is, uh, cannot say not about, state website, part of information is currently with ACK vaccine dot com. A lot of information about population groups eligible, I just get all information about the number of vaccines, got it, state distributed, so it'd be a lot of information out there. Also, uh, do want to note, we do have a new city planner, it's Mark Lee, so, it's a city two day, uh, it's being deployed, it's being implemented in a working environment, uh, on that, uh, we are having, have been bringing several years, periodical code enforcement, building codes, uh, and then obviously planning, so. Look forward to working with him, uh, also just want to bring up, um, recreation program, just so everybody's aware. City is in the process of trying to get everything, kind of grouped together with the hot pot recommendations that are out there, uh, as far as, um, youth sports, youth recreation opportunities in the next coming months, so we are working with county to make sure that that is, uh, up to par, as far as what they need to be doing. Uh, that also includes the aquatic center, we are working on trying to get that figured out, luckily, we do have some models to go off, as far as how that will eventually work, more than likely, uh, ice slots and things like that, but, that's getting, with the, uh, Health Department, trying to help. In a nutshell, we do, uh, only intend to have very similar programs to what we normally have, um, likelihood of having summer camp that we normally have in the past, unlikely. Right, we can, um, but as far as youth sports, uh, and the aquatic center, we are proceeding, like we normally would down. Then lastly, just wanted to note, we are working through the new water plant process. Just want to bring up, the filter media that the city purchased, and then cleaned out, probably will be four months, real nice. Uh, we're looking at that, meaning, need to get clean, yep, uh, so that is, in a sense, that we are looking at, try to keep our system that we currently have running, we have the void, uh, council, that, and think water, uh, and the, and others, uh.
Is that, is it because of the deteriorates of the, of the, you got it for a lot of them?
It's, it's a lot of things, um, the raw water is part of it, pumping out, once it gets into the filter, it's just, it's, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, it's just it's a lot, so what's happening is the junk, technical term, um, coming through that is, again, just sticking to the filter media, so that should not be an issue within the new operation, because we can account for that, part of that design, um, again, that's it's unfortunate, but I'm happy to know that we, I think, that, know what we're doing, and obviously, the rest of the, for informals, um, get the fixes over the summer, but obviously, we need to maintain this for at least a duration until we get a facility up, which, yeah, a whole lot of time. Uh, eighteen months, two years, kind of thing, at the least, yes, uh, so we are working through, yeah, some of those processes, the state revolving fund, financing that project, getting the nine teams together with engineering, that, ultimately, just both are putting, you know, I believe that they on, the upcoming agenda, February, uh, as well, public hearing, uh, coming on that, as well, I think, I want to point out that our system is, is being well maintained, but it's requiring a lot. But we're doing everything we can to, other than that, that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with the council, if you can. But, uh, shall, uh, you mentioned the, you said the plan is tomorrow, did you say?
Correct.
Okay, wasn't, wasn't sure. And then, uh, you said something, you think with regards to other plans, you said something with a, what, I, I missed it, I.
So the filter media is, is a giant filter, much like you have, with a filter, the issue is that this one looks like, uh, somebody dumped, dumped truck up there, you should, uh, again, technical way, I don't want about it, but basically, this is not a filter, um, what's required, just is, now I'm cleaning that out on a fairly regular basis, we're talking about four, maybe four months, and this is roughly a coffee, probably, well, fifty-seven thousand dollars every time we clean that out.
How many does it?
Fifteen.
Can you?
There's no can.
Summer.
We, we probably, in all likelihood, we're trying to operate a summer camp in a way that would be, uh, conducive to the environment, so to find yourself in front of the facility, and then also trying to maintain what was required to be maintained.
Correct.
Number of kids that we could realistically have, it's, it's.
I just want to.
Yes, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, uh, but again, we are working to try to do as much programming as we safely can, so again, we will be looking to have new sports programs as we normally do, uh, we are set up to, again, to calendar sports, uh, provide soccer camps in the summertime, lovely, that's in June. Uh, so again, we're trying to put things back to normal, while adhering to recommendations and guidelines from, uh, our partner, Fulton County and State, and then also, I would say, the National Parks and Recreation Association put out some really good information, uh, and I'll say, Justine and her staff have done an excellent job of identifying what we need to do, to do, um, the programs that we all want to have for, uh, for kids and adults like, doing it in a safe way, that everybody feels comfortable participating.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear, like, Deborah on that, that is a big plus, I know, sense of parents, family will get a big plus from the table, but no, well, it's a dance. Waiting for the girl to even take it back, yeah. At the end of this, we can be perfect.
Uh, with, with, New Dean, health department, all that, that's, we're thankful, and all that, so, USC two oh four staff, all getting, um, our strength for USC two oh four vaccination, I would call it. With the, uh, people, people, these, here, uh, John, I can, it's a tough mind, that, like, Casey Star, and, uh, of their history, his grandfather, some, any tools, or help, or have partner, have, 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 a decent daughter, history, to add, and, 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 uh, that, for, for, for all teachers that, when we have been at, the schools, and you get, supporting the star, uh, through the first school district in the state of Kansas, we will do that, help a lot. The other thing, Mr. Spencer Thompson, asked me questions after the last meeting, I want to get them, I look forward to seeing you soon, I, I was quite pleased to have a meeting, and, I just want to say, sorry, I do that, that's, that, all the love.
I was really impressed with the vaccinations, they have the old K R, it was incredible, because they have so well, it was all, uh, yeah.
I, uh, I believe my experience of that facility and how it looks like the same facilities that you see on the C D C, uh, videos, and, and magazines, wherever, and apparently, they're not in the entire country, that's, how that works, um, the top, the, the most, well, uh, no, no, this.
I was excited to make sure that the new service is sent out, we, we're, we'll be right off, and then, we're waiting on more supply, to fill that, to have some steel, for having stolen?
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, with COVID, and some of the issues, and forty items that have caused some delays, uh, by and large, though, city hall is, on pace, around a yard, it's kind of, right, substantial completion, March, April, so that also, substantial completion, again, just need for name substantially, but not fully, uh, and that's for the police department as well, so, uh, I pointed out, and it'll straighten it, police department, society, city hall, not, um, they are, the lookery, from the outside, the lookery from the inside, there are little, uh, button up pieces that need to go into it, uh, a lot of site work still needs to get done, so this will be, uh, this will be a project that will be with us well into, uh, probably the summertime, as far as this sod and seeding, planting, life, and then we've also got a lot of work going on downtown, street resurfacing, some pedestrian changes, odd seeders, so, um, but by and large, I think this probably will hold well. And if I haven't, uh, pictured them for a while, hopefully, that goes after tomorrow's meeting with the design, construction team, but, yeah, it's fun a lot.
You've already, you've already been in a relationship.
Yeah, yeah. You're on a, 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 I'm not going to talk to you, uh, for, for, yeah. A law, what is a law? Um, nothing, thank you all, well.